Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board Meeting for October 15th, 2020. The meeting is being recorded. It's available viewing on the Douglas Public Access Channel and on our website. We'll come to order at 7:00. And first item on the agenda is public hearing Pine, Sand and Stone Company. Application for an earth removal special permit in Water Resource Protection Overlay District. Special permit ER 20-200827 in AQ-200827, 62 Manchog Street. Now, I will read the notes. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, and the Town of Douglas Earth Removal Zoning Bylaw, Section 6.1 and 9.3, in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, Section 8.1 and 9.3, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on the application of applicant Pine, Sand and Stone, One Lucky Dam Road, Douglas, Mass, and owner St. Dennis Cemetery, 23 Manchog Street, Douglas, Mass, for an earth removal special permit and a Water Resource Protection Overlay District special permit for property located at 62 Manchog Street, Douglas, Mass, assesses map 143, parcels 20 and 21, and assesses map 162, parcels 37 and 38, as shown on an earth removal plan prepared by four Pine, Sand and Stone by Allen Engineering and Associates, 1 Charles View Road, Suite 2, Oakdale, Massachusetts, dated July 22nd, 2020, consisting of six acres. The public hearing will be held on Thursday, October 15th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. A copy of the submittal is available for viewing in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated. Ernest Marks, Chairman, Douglas Planning Board. Public hearing is now open. Do we have anybody here?
Yeah, Eric's online, Eric Bazette from Allen Engineering.
Okay.
Haven't seen Eric in a while. I'm here.
Can Eric, Bill? Yep, we can hear you, Eric.
Okay. So, what we're proposing is approximately a six acre earth removal area, four different parcels of land. The four parcels of land make up about 43 acres. The earth removal area we're proposing is only about six acres. So, two of the parcels are owned by the Roman Catholic Church, one of them is St. Dennis Cemetery itself, and then the other piece of land is a vacant wooden piece of land behind it. And then, the other two parcels are owned in the name of Fay Maniac. So, if I could, can I do a screen share here?
We can try this, we can try this.
So, are you able to see the plan now, Eric?
No, we still see you, Eric.
Eric?
Um, here. Do you want the Zscaler login here's what?
Uh-uh.
It's blocking my stuff.
There it is.
Okay, so let's try.
You gotta pick your correct tab.
There it is.
You have to maximize the screen if you can.
Yep, looks like a little racetrack. Doesn't it?
Yep, that's great, that's the best I can do.
That's good, that's good.
Yep.
If I can zoom out a little bit.
No, it, okay, there we go.
Okay, so.
Can our cable guy show that on our TV?
So, so this is St. Dennis Cemetery, right in this area here. That's about 6.9 acres, and then the other piece of land owned by the church follows this line around up close by the river. So, it's this area here. That piece of land is about 13 acres, and then the Maniac Parcels are down here. And those comprise about 22 acres. So, the access, there's basically two parts to this earth removal project, and one is the, just the access road itself, because we'll come in from the cemetery, and then the other half is the actual earth removal area. So, the access road can only come in from the cemetery at this point because there's graves all around the perimeter of the cemetery, and this is the only spot that we know for sure that there's, there's no burial sites. So, as we come in from the cemetery at this point, there's a dumpster here, not only there's a road that comes through here, through the woods. At this point, we're in the riverfront area, we're in rare species habitat, and we're within the Water Resource Protection Overlay District as we go from the access road to the earth removal area. So, those are the regulatory permitting processes that we have to deal with just for the access road. Then we have a stream crossing at this point, which we filed a notice at the Conservation Commission for approval of the stream crossing as well as the work within the riverfront area. And then, once we get across the stream and into this area, at this point, we're just in the buffer zone of the wetlands and outside of the other regulatory areas, but you can see the Water Resource Protection District is this line here.
Put some color on this. In your packet, excuse me, Eric, in your packet, I have a color map, and several color maps actually, that you can take a look at to kind of get a better idea of the boundaries of the Water Resource Protection District. Sorry, Eric, go ahead.
I see, I'll give you a reminder.
Well, it's not this one. It's all one color. Is there a different one?
No, 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 it's a different one, there's three pages.
Is it in this thing?
Yeah.
Do you mind?
Three pages?
Yeah. It's not in the packet, it's in the separate.
Is this the plan you were referring to?
No, no, it's, if you went to the link I sent out, Eric, it had a locust map, and it was just basically colorful GIS maps that showed your plan.
Yeah, that's it, Mike. Yeah, those are it.
So, the whole thing's Water Resources.
It's different.
No, that's where we're just discussing.
Still, huh?
So, the plan is the markup that the bill that's updated is to be colored, it shows the different blinders.
Yeah.
So, on the plan, Eric, showing the red is the proposed excavation area.
The green line is the limit of the Water Resource Protection Overlay District. So, it's basically the north and west of the excavation area is Water Resource Protection. So, there's really only a small portion that lies within it, and that's the access road area.
So, that's where the excavation's gonna be, okay.
Minor, yeah, the cross there.
The road.
Is the access road the cemetery road? I know that's the point of view, access, but it's, are you using that road that people access, the graves and all, same road, to get off the street?
Yes, from Manchog Street, we'd be using the roadway, the existing roadway systems in the cemetery to get to the access road here. So, it would either be this, this road here, or this other road here.
Okay.
Is the intent to haul the material out through the cemetery?
Yeah, that's the only way out.
Is that's gonna be a main road in and out?
Yes.
So, that road isn't gonna be designed to haul, handle all them ten wheels and tri轴s?
Yeah, that's just a.
Those are just little roads in there.
That's grave access roads.
So, what's gonna happen there?
This is Andy Leonard, you talking on the road of the cemetery?
Yes.
Yeah.
The pavement.
It's a single lane, it's just a little road going up through there.
Yeah, at some point, that road would probably have to be rebuilt.
You intended on doing that before or after, what's the game plan?
That would be after.
Why wouldn't you do it before, so it could handle the weight, the capacity? I'm sure there's no, you know, standard blinder coats and, you know, street grade, you know, construction.
That could be considered, it would be discussed with the church.
Well, how thick's the asphalt down there now? How thick's the asphalt coming up through there? Have you done any test pour, so deep it is?
No.
So, there could only be maybe three inches of asphalt.
Yeah.
Right?
If that.
If that, and you start running what, 80, you know, 80,000 pounds, tri轴 load at least, if not more?
Yep.
Every day, up and down that road, and then people need to use it for a service or anything?
Yeah, whatever.
There's gonna be that a lot.
So, why don't I suggest this, you know, for the next meeting, they take a look at access through the existing cemetery in terms of the construction of the existing road network, what they're proposing for improvements during and after construction.
Yeah, that's right.
And then, the couple of things I noticed when I was out there, Eric and Andy, some of the trees tend to go over that driveway, and they're low hanging along with the width of the driveway. So, like, like a ten wheeler, or even a dump truck's gonna have a tough time making a couple of those corners that are within the site. So, if you, I think if you think about a plan for that, so the board, you can address that with the board.
Yeah, we'd rather vet this out now and get it out to you ahead of this, so we can, you know, have the information.
Yeah, that's no problem, that makes perfect sense.
Yep, I mean, I saw an excavator, do you have an excavator sitting down there right now, off the road? Somebody does, drop by tonight.
Yeah, one of them did, they're digging, I took a walk back to digging stuff yesterday.
What?
I think he's having some audio problems.
Murray Bristol, for me.
We hear you.
Yeah, go ahead, Murray.
We hear you, Murray.
Yeah, we were over there excavating a couple of test pits yesterday, it's just a mini excavator, it's just nothing major over there right now.
Permits, insurance, all that stuff, cemetery.
Well.
They work it out, they work it out, that's all.
I think the roads on that cemetery are tight.
Oh, they're tiny little roads.
No, but it's, it's a width, you know, decent width road, but it's not.
To cover all bases, is there access possible from the Maniac property?
Uh-uh, because it slivers down too tight.
Yeah, so this is their only, to get there, that'd be the only access.
Yeah. Yeah, because the Maniac slivers down to the front.
What about, if it's the.
Just for the public to know that that's their only possible access.
So, I think to the south, they've got some wetlands and topography there.
Oh, yeah, they're still even there.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, what about to the northwest, where there seems there's, well, who knows what's in there for grave sites, but to go around the northwest side, I guess that doesn't make any sense.
Oh, no. So, so the lower corner, I would say the lower corner in red, I think that, that there, but, or fairly is close to the West Street Cemetery?
Yeah.
Ernie, I think it's very close to the West Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, I don't know. And that, and that's, the roads in, the roads in this cemetery here, St. Dennis is better than the ones on West Street.
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah.
West Street, West Street's.
It's travel, right?
Everyone built or designed to have trucks going up and down.
No, no.
Plus, you're gonna bring all that equipment in too, excavating.
Yeah, I mean, you start bringing in, you know, loads of over 100,000 pounds, you know.
And then the dust on the grave.
They'll have to work that out with the church.
Yeah, they'll work out with the church. The dust on the grave sites, I mean, that's gonna have to be cleaned at some point, I mean, people wanna come and see dust on top of the, I mean, that's between them and the St. Dennis.
They'll have to work that out with the church and present the plan to us.
But the church should know that that's, we wanna vet this out, again, that there could be dust issues.
Well, I did ask them to submit a dust control plan, and certainly they can include a section on that.
Right, right, nobody wants the top of their stone, you know, the headstone to have, you know.
Yeah.
Heated bitch, dirt, sand.
Manchog Street, I can't remember if it dips down, they're going to the cemetery.
Yeah, it does sound, then you start, Greg, they're going.
So, how's your intent, there been a lowboy in there with the dipping down like that? I mean, you know, how much of a grave, with a lowboy, he doesn't take much of a grave, and you're gonna hang the trailer up. So, if you're coming off, you're gonna have to build that up to get in there, or what are you gonna have to do?
Well, I don't know, I guess that's a valid point, we'd have to look at that and make it accessible to, once the site, probably have to get an excavator in there one time, initially, a lot of the water, and then, then it goes there, and then once that starts done, the rest of the work can be already in the.
Because the radius, you're gonna need to get in and out of there with that dip going down, there's no way you're gonna get a lowboy in there. Lowboy's only what, maybe max six inches off the ground, on a good day?
Mike, are you talking in the cemetery property?
Right, to get in on that road, to make that swing to get in there, dipping on down.
I would suspect it would have to be unloaded on Manchog Street, byward and walked in.
So, then, you're really not gonna have any road coming up into there, you start walking and that kinda stuff.
It could very well be, I think that's a good point, well, we'll look at that and work that, and bring, present that to the board, but that's also a discussion to have with the church.
Right.
I mean, my thoughts is we could wanna put a link for us over that area, and then address it after the earth removal and the expansion is complete, you know.
Let's vet it all out ahead.
If any section of road is completely rebuilt.
Right, I mean, because it's a deal, I mean, you know, and I know too, you start getting trailer dumps in there, stop making that swing and everything in and out of that road all day long.
Yeah, we're kinda looking at this as a ten wheeler job.
All ten wheel?
It changes the weight a little bit, but it's still, it's still moving.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, ten wheeler or trailer dump, and then the efficiency's in the trailer dumps, and you know that.
No, they're gonna make it up.
Just on that, I'd like to know what the game plan is before we get going too far on this entrant.
So, you're saying that based on the size of those vehicles, it could be a trade-off that's worth to do something to that road to use it?
Well, they're not gonna get the trailer in there, not if it's dipped down.
Yeah, unless they build, like you said, they build it up or something, right?
Right.
Right, it's a trade-off, couldn't it?
All right, so we'll need, we'll need, we'll need some information on that.
How they wanna do it, the church and stuff. But where it's coming onto a public road, we need to know what.
State road.
That's a state road, too, that's even more important.
Can I just jump in?
Yep.
We have a new meeting minute take, or so, when you speak, including people online, just state your name, so she knows who, she knows who's speaking, she's not familiar with anybody, so.
Okay, yeah. Mudziger.
All right, so, we'll be looking for some information on a plan on how you're gonna get in and out of there, and what's gonna be done with the road in there, I guess.
The rest is.
Okay, we can move on to what's next.
You're gonna say, we don't get no sleep around here.
Yeah, is there anything else you wanted to address, Eric, on this?
Yeah, just that we filed with Conservation, we got review comments from both the land conservation, that we're going through those comments now, and natural heritage, yes, we knew the plan, and they gave us conditions for the earth removal portion of it. At some point in the future, we'd like to use this area to expand the cemetery. I know you did ask us to look at alternatives for access, but if we're gonna use this for future expansion of the cemetery, this is really the only access point we can use is the point from the cemetery itself.
Or reason to fix the road.
We don't wanna make that part of our project now, but to keep in mind that at some point in the future, we would like to use this area for expansion of the existing cemetery.
It's not, oh, Mike.
Introduce yourself.
We had calculated 180,000 yards of earth, and I think there was probably 20,000, 20,000 of top and some, so, so 160,000 would leave the site, and then some of the top and some would remain for reclamation.
Okay, so, Eric, can you convert that for the board, for number of trucks per day, and what type of duration are you looking at?
Yeah, we had, we had discussed it, and I think we were, we were anticipating probably a maximum of 1,000, I mean, this is with approval report.
Yeah.
1,000 cubic yard per day, which would be 30 to 35 truck loads per day. So, at 180,000 yards, if we do 1,000 yards, that's 180 days. You know, those aren't calendar days, those are trucking days, so, you know. And maybe realistically.
Nine months.
Three times that long.
Are you looking at trailer dumps or dump trucks, ten, ten wheelers?
Andy Leonard, well, right now, the thought is it would be ten wheelers.
Okay, cool.
Just for use of access and.
Makes sense. So, Les Stevens here, question for you guys, what's, I know this is the narrowest width where the river is, behind where the dumpsters are, what's the width of the culvert going in there?
The new culvert?
Yeah.
Eric, can you scroll to the page that has the detail on the culvert?
Can you see it's on the screen here? Is that on back page here? So.
Yeah.
This is still, this is still being reviewed by Conservation, and we're, we're looking at making some changes to it, but this is our initial, initial design was 16 foot wide gravel road, 30 foot length of culvert, and then the culvert itself would have an eight foot span over the intermittent stream.
Now, is it gonna have temporary headwalls or?
Yeah, there would have, what we were proposing was a segmental block wall for headwalls on both sides.
Yes, go ahead, Bill.
So, I did forward this culvert crossing to our structural bridge engineer.
Yep.
They had some feedback, and I just wanna make sure Eric's planning and responding to those comments. So, for example, one of the comments that struck me as interesting was, and I don't know if this is true or not, Eric, but it was presented that the plan was to build this crossing after the excavation was completed, which didn't make sense to us, so.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I would think they'd wanna construct this first, limit the amount of disturbance, and then, you know, proceed with the excavation, right?
Yes, we had shown, because on the plan, it shows a temporary culvert within the final culvert, and that temporary culvert is just to get the equipment across the, it's not for the earth removal project. So, the, this, the final culvert would be constructed for use during the earth removal project, and that would be one of the first things that gets done is the stream crossing with the culvert.
So, with the log clearing and all that, will you be hauling logs out of there too? So, they'll be crossing that culvert with the skids and all that, or is it, what's the whole game plan there?
Yeah, Mike, I, I believe the paving right out by Eric, we would clear, clear that end enough to get over the culvert area with the temporary pipe, then construct the culvert and headwalls, and then, then the earth removal permit clearing, and that, that earth removal permit, we're working to be phasing that, so Phase 1 would be cleared, all that, but that would be Phase 2, actually, Phase 1 would be, uh, there to work in and installing the culvert.
Okay. Andy, would you be able to submit a schedule similar to what you just described in writing, so we can reference it in the decision?
Sure.
Yeah.
The other question I have is on the final deal on the crossing, where they're saying about having that as a possible extra area down, you know, years down the road for the cemetery. Will it be a final bridge type deal left there forever for getting to the back property? There's gonna be a permanent structure forever, is the game plan, right?
Yes, that would be the game, this would be the access for the cemetery expansion.
Okay.
God, rather than, um.
To whom I now care, but then all set up for down the road for the general public, if need be, that's gonna be the only way to get across to the other side, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So, Les Stevens' question, Andy, you plan on temporarily crossing the stream, are you gonna sleeve it, the stream?
The temporary, the temporary crossing would only be enough so that we'd have access to the other side.
Yeah.
And have access to the other side, because you'd have to put those puddings in and approach this from both sides of the bridge.
Yeah. Yeah, are you gonna, like a temporary tube and sandbag it on both ends?
Temporary, just, you know, probably for a duration of, we've done a bunch of these and the culvert, and then it really takes a lot longer to do the headwalls.
Yeah.
So, temporary, temporary pipe would only be in probably for literally three, three to five days, and then the culvert would be in, and then enough placed against it, so the long delivery equipment could get back and forth to work on both sides of the, we would be hanging on.
Okay, so you, yeah, and you've got tree removal, right, on both sides of the embankment, because you're gonna have to put a crane to lower that culvert in?
Possibly a crane.
A big S right there.
For culverts of this size, they come in eight foot segments, four foot segments, we've been able to lift them with our bigger XK.
Okay, all right. Cool.
Okay, Bill?
So, a few things on this crossing, again, I believe it will warrant a building permit with the Building Department, so we'll have that in the decision. They also reference that they're gonna have a structural design performed at that point, so we'll put that in the decision. I would also suggest that we, we include fall protection that conforms to either public highway requirements or building code requirements, and/or, let me say. You know, because this may be accessible to the public in the future.
Yeah.
It's a concern.
Yeah, definitely.
And on the building of it, I mean, like Cedar Street, when that was built, it was said for 10 years, a temporary bridge. Something like this, is there any idea of figuring out, okay, they're partnering in today, is it gonna fall apart, I know it's not, but fall apart in five years, or is it still gonna be there in 20, 30 years, that deal? Granted, it has to do with the church and everything else, but it's on the plan, so, and we're okay in the plan. So, we kinda need to know, you know, this is gonna go, and how it's gonna stay up, because our names on it.
Yep, so, just, Bill, one other thing, I think what's needed is the specs on the culvert, to be us to receive a copy of the specs on the culvert.
Yeah.
The building inspector's gonna need that too, but it's most likely gonna be all, you know, rebar, probably out of old castle, like a precast, H20 loaded.
The structural design, the stamp, I would be comfortable with them doing that.
Yeah, that's all.
They take ownership of it once that happens.
Yep.
Which, you know, from the town's perspective, is a good thing.
Yep.
The, in terms of flow capacity, I mean, Eric, I'm sure has looked at both the 24-inch diameter temporary culvert.
Yeah.
Along with the opening for the box culvert.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure I saw calculations on those, Eric. I'm not sure I saw calculations on those, Eric.
Yeah, though, there's a very small amount of flow that goes to that front, so, um, the permanent culvert, it meets the openness ratios, uh, that are required now for stream crossings, which usually end up being way overdesigned as far as culvert capacity goes. So, there shouldn't be an issue with capacity of the culvert.
So, so let me word this a different way, did you run any calculations on that?
Uh, yeah, well, we, we did, I didn't submit them, but we have, uh, you know, it's just a basic, um, peak flow calculation, Q equals CIA type of deal.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to review that.
Okay.
So, I have not started the stormwater review, I did have a chance to watch the con-con meeting, I tend to agree with some of their comments, Eric, regarding, instead of having one low point at the low end of the site, and I don't know if you want to flip the page back so the board can see what we're talking about, um, there's basically, the commission was concerned that all the flow from the post-developed site goes to this one basin area right here.
Yeah.
And the wetland currently sheets down, the water sheets down, feeds a wetland over in this area.
Mm-hmm.
So, the concern from the commission was this will dry out.
Yeah, the steel.
Everything goes up there. So, I tend to agree, so I would encourage you to actually look at possibly having another discharge point there, Eric, um, feeding that, I guess, southern end of the site.
Yeah.
And it looks like the grades are such that you can actually run a culvert down through there, yeah.
We took a look at it, we can, we can break it up into, um, a second basin or a second discharge point, but the actual flows that are coming off of that post-development are very low because the soil is so sandy there, um, you don't really even generate any runoff or anything less than a 10-year storm post-developed. But, we can take a look at, I know conservation was, um, was also concerned about that, they wanting us to go over to the second basin, so, um, we're looking at possibly another, another basin over in this area here.
Right.
Um, even if it's just temporary, but something to, to help break up the flow.
And, uh, so, you know, with your application, I was a little confused, um, in your narrative, you had indicated that it was, you were filing for not only the earth removal, but also for the cemetery, which is a post-developed use. Um, and so verbally we'd spoken and you said you weren't filing for the cemetery, the plans don't show anything related to the cemetery, like an internal roads network, that would be impervious runoff, um, for grave sites. So, for example, with regard to the water resource protection overlay district, even though it's kind of obvious, you're, you're not showing this information, so it's presumptive. Um, the area that lies within the water resource protection overlay district, obviously we wouldn't want any of the grave sites located there because there's chemicals that are involved that are prohibited in the water.
In water resources, yeah.
Right, so, um, you know, I think it, you, you need to be a little clearer on the scope of what the board's looking at with regard to that.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, this was just, this was just a conceptual road layout for the cemetery, but, um, this, somewhere, somewhere in the future, we aren't proposing, we aren't proposing any type of, um, expansion of the cemetery.
So, don't, don't include it if it.
Okay.
One or the other.
All right.
Somebody's chatting.
Murray, we're shutting you off.
How's it, Murray?
Laurie, who's at the bottom?
On, Laurie Howard. Good job.
Good deal.
Murray, I'm gonna turn you back on, Murray.
All right, so I think we're good.
Is your game plan just to reseed this all when you're done? Just a little bit and seed it?
Uh, yes, um, for, for the most part, and then I think the conservation wanted to see some additional plantings in the buffer zone.
Okay.
All right, cool. When's our next meeting? Let's set them up.
So, so, I put two letters together, Eric's in the process of responding to those. I, I'm gonna hold off on the stormwater, Eric, till you revise the plan.
Okay.
And, um, and then we'll go from there.
Cool. When's our next meeting?
Um, well, how much time do you need, Eric?
Has to address the road too.
I'll have to, um, I'll have to get back to you on that, um, what were you talking about for the next meeting?
Yeah, it's, uh, either October 28th.
Yeah, probably the one after that, I don't know where it was.
There's only one meeting that month, right?
Do you want to go on the next meeting?
It's, uh, November 19th, Eric.
November 19th?
Yep.
Remember, there's only one meeting in November, one in December.
Can always put you on the 28th.
Let's try from the November 19th for then.
Okay, 7 o'clock.
Right.
November 19th?
Yep.
How, how much time do you have on?
Half hour.
Being a state road, is there anything the state has to sign off on?
Yes.
When we're doing this?
Yeah.
Does that have a whole set of entity?
Yes, uh, that's part of my comments, there's signage that we have requirements for in our bylaws, um, so basically I ask them to either provide a letter from the state indicating their approval of what they're proposing, let them know about the number of vehicles, you know, and as much as they could give us state okay.
Right.
You know, that's what we want, or we could condition it, so I'm kinda leaving it up to them on how they do that.
Also.
And if they also need to do an increase on curb cut, I mean, driveway opening, that should be, I mean, pretty relevant because right now, I mean, I'm telling you, I mean, guys can do it by sweeping in, a low boy in that area is gonna be a one type.
It's a narrow little gateway.
It ain't, it's not gonna happen, so, it's a deal where, have it all, hammer it out so that you can just do it and be done with it.
And this, this is.
Instead of running into trouble.
This is Aaron Sokrat for our writer, um, so maybe Ernie, I can ask you too, is there any regulations, I think there's regulations for cemeteries, there's some sort of oversee, I mean, you just can't put a cemetery in a backyard.
There's state law, yeah, DEP has guidelines on it, I can somewhat look into it, they have a three-foot vertical offset to groundwater, I think, from the bottom of the grade, um, so there's some things that they have to consider in doing this.
Right, but I just, to dot the i's, cross the t's for.
Well, that's a.
Developer that.
So, just an earth removal.
I, I don't know, I'm just saying.
You don't want to do earth removal to the point where all of a sudden, boom, you gotta haul stuff back in to, to build the cemetery.
No, 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 no.
Should all be considered at the same time.
It's still 10-foot.
No, no, I'm not, I'm trying, I'm trying to help the applicant, I'm just saying that, just vet it out, if there's anything, just make sure the state board of regulations of cemeteries doesn't allow this, or you gotta do this, and if, I don't know.
I would just take it as an earth removal right now and then.
I think Eric's already indicated that they're not gonna pursue.
Right, pursue the cemetery.
No, no, not, not to do the new cemetery if there's anything about this interfacing with the activity on a regulated, uh, different activity, the use, which is a cemetery, there may, just be sure there isn't something that says you can't do this activity and pulled 6,000 trucks along the side of cemetery, you know, over a period of time, just, I, just so you, I don't know, you don't get tripped up.
Yeah.
That's all, it just seems to be.
To that, to that point, we would, we, we believe, uh, the earth removal plan wants to leave this in the use that it's intended.
No, I understand that, just, just interface.
So, so what I would suggest, I mean, because really that's, in my opinion, beyond our scope, you know, it may offend some people having tractor-trailer trucks driving through.
And I'm not talking about the offense, it's just if there's a regulation, that's all.
No, I know, so we usually have a standard sentence in all our decisions that basically says, you know, this does not relieve them from, from obtaining any other state local approvals.
Sure, that's typical, yeah, thank you.
You know, so we throw that in there, so that kinda covers us on that.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
We can look.
So, the last thing is, we're in the process of determining the high groundwater level.
Yeah.
They did add a new, uh, wellsite the other day, um, I wanted to make sure Eric got my photo with the rust line, uh, the modeling, which, which would imply to me that the groundwater's at somewhat of a higher elevation, if you look at the cross section from my letter, it's closer to what I had shown in that with the dash line.
Yeah.
Right. And I just want to make sure, what my colleague, Michael, had asked about, and everyone, about the road construction, to make sure they, they do a test and they come up with a plan to us about how they're gonna enhance that road so it can, um, the structure of the road can be modified in such a way that it completely works with what they were trying to do, that's all, I mean, they have to show it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no way you're gonna get a truck coming in and a truck going out.
No, no, you know, I mean, we know that, I mean.
The sides of these are gonna collapse, they're gonna get in mud, you know.
Okay, come in, you can go out.
And I'll tell you, some of those sites are literally located right there.
Yeah, I know, some challenges.
Right, and that's, and that's why, I'm just bringing it up on what the game plan is, is, I mean, I see no problem using it, I mean, they don't care what the church and all that deal, but, I'm gonna see a game plan here, I mean.
Yeah.
If you start hauling in ten-wheelers or trailer dumps and/or you start hauling in low boys and everything else, that little road's gonna get tight real quick.
Right, with people buried there, you wanna pull an ass out of there either.
To the chair, Bill, so I, I see you think about the, what they proposed for the proposed ground was about 4, 420, between what, 425, and it's tailing down to about 4, looks like 405, that's this?
Right, that's their interpolated groundwater.
Correct, okay, is yours slightly different than?
So, the couple of problems I had with what they submitted, um, the regulation specifies certain timeframe within the year to measure the groundwater elevation, what the data they provided is not within that timeframe.
Okay.
That's number one.
What's the?
Two, we're in a drought.
So, what's, what's the timeframe?
I don't know, it's in the red.
It's in the red, okay, I just wanted it for the record.
We're out of condition, and number three, um, they did add this extra wellsite, which I thought was gonna be productive, it's adjacent to a wetland, and as I suspected it did, like I said, it's close to where my dash lines show on that, on that, uh.
Okay.
I expect grades to come up slightly.
All right, so you're thinking two, two feet off or something like that, two, three feet, okay.
Well, I, I.
No, again.
Think it's a little more than that, but, yeah.
Well, yeah, I'm just, from the pencil marks.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're still determining what the groundwater is? All right, cool. I'm good, Ernie? You ready?
It's good.
Good? Okay, moving on, anything else, Eric?
Um, no, that was, that was about it on my end.
All right.
All right. Bill, anything else right now?
Not for right now.
Okay. All right, so they're on for the November 19th meeting at 7?
November 19th at 7.
Okay. All right, um, does anybody in the audience have any comments or questions at this time? One guy. Name an address, please.
Steve Navarasa, 45 Grove Street, Douglas, um, it could have a, a different access to that land without any worry about some 30s, because I own the adjacent property.
Oh.
And it's, the road in there already, Dart Road, that's been in the family forever, so, gravel pit.
Yeah.
And skirt around all the issue, we just have one stream crossing and you get right to where he's gotta go.
Where is it?
All that left to work.
He's on Grove Street, which is, uh, to the north.
This is on Manchurian Road.
Manchurian, oh, okay.
Steven.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is Grove Stronger.
It's pretty clear, his, his mother's house.
Well, I mean, it's whatever deal they want to make, but that's.
I, I think the problem over there would be the streams wider.
Something getting the road here.
I, I just remember being in that cemetery as a kid, and that was like the now's point.
So, I think the access in that stream crossing, Eric, is consistent with the DEP's comments to you on looking at alternatives, correct?
Yes, that was, those were one of their comments, but, but the other, the other part of that was that this is ultimately supposed to be an expansion of the cemetery.
Well, two different things.
It has to be connected to the cemetery, so the access by the cemetery. Well, yeah, but, it is all part of the, the alternatives analysis that we need to do for DEP.
So, you're gonna look at the other possible access, Eric? Is that, this is Aaron asking, so are you going to look at the other access, Eric?
Yes, yes, we are.
Have you been in talks with the other party at all?
No, no.
Is this something new to you, that you might have heard that this was suggested?
Andy, Steve, I don't know if Steve if you can hear me.
Yeah.
But Steve and I had spoke, I think, a couple of years ago now, time goes by so fast.
It does.
We'd be happy to walk down with you, and.
Sure.
As you remember, we walked it, I'm glad, it might have been a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
It seemed to me that as we got beyond the, we're in, in towards the back of the cemetery there, the removal moment, that there was a big wetland crossing.
Yeah.
Uh, we'd really be happy to, to visit that, I mean, there's a ton of pepper and everything.
Just, yeah, exhausted, that's all, I'll take a look.
Yeah, whenever it's good to you, Andy.
Yeah, I, I think, Andy, I think you're right to that, I, I remember the, the narrowest point as a kid was behind that dumpster to get across the stream to the other side, everything else was a little wider and wider and wider, so. Yeah, worthwhile to investigate, all right.
Yeah, I would think that would be a great access in and out, you know, you avoid in the whole cemetery altogether.
Yeah.
You're coming right along the side of it, but you're going around the back.
Correct.
You don't wake anybody.
I just don't know.
I'm surprised where they put the access.
Yeah.
Oh, is it flat? You got a low boy, as you say, in there?
Yeah, yeah.
I would definitely look at that.
Yeah.
Even if you have to tie it outside the cemetery, that's, I think you'd be saving yourself a lot of time and effort with getting equipment in and out.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's not a big deal.
All right, anybody else? Anything further from the board? Bill?
No.
Eric, nothing else?
I've seen on mine.
Okay, all right, so we'll see you on November 19th at 7 o'clock.
Need a motion?
Yep, we need a motion to continue the public hearing.
So, we're gonna go to November?
November 19th at 7:00 P.M.
Yep. Motion made by Mike Z.
To continue public hearing for Pine Center gravel, for earth removal permit, uh, to November 19th, 7:00 P.M.
And water resource.
And water resource protection overlay district.
Mm-hmm. Okay, motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Mike G. Mm-hmm. All right, any further discussion?
Roll call.
All in favor, roll call, vote please. Les Stevens' eye.
Mike Cracker, I.
Mike Zoker, I.
Aaron Sokrat, I.
Jake Schultzberg, I.
Ernie Mock's eye. And let the record show that Tracy Shaki is absent.
Okay, I, I have a question, once I, I didn't want to ask it before, because it's not germane to this, I'm fascinated by this earth removal thing, it's nothing that's been in my vocabulary as an architect and a planner, where I lived and worked for the last 25 years. So, the fact is that, it, it sounds like there's about 6,000 truckloads gonna come out of this, based on.
Whatever it is.
Right? That affects the, the roads, the livability of the town, the dust, the this, the that, that, that. How does the town get tax money from this? Is this off the, I can't, go ahead.
Well, I just want to make sure that we're not talking about this project.
No, any project, earth removal, I'm fascinated, because we have a lot of them here in this town, so.
Yeah.
Unlike, you know, we put up a solar project or, or marijuana grow, and we get tax dollars, and we have agreements between the selectmen and whatever, um, so is there anything, does a town, say, $2 million of something comes out of here, or $3 million, does a town get a percentage of that? Is there something paid?
The applicant, the applicant pays a fee for the earth removal.
Well, well, it's not just that, I mean, if.
I just want to ask.
Vehicles registered in town, then that would apply, if they have a business registered in town, those things would be applied through the tax, uh, tax assessors.
Right, and they pay their tax dollars for the roads and all that.
And that's really.
That's it, yeah, that's it, that's it.
So, you could have a 10, 12 million dollar project of earth removal, and the town So you could have a 10, $12 million project of earth removal, and the town doesn't really get anything other than whatever's the state registration of vehicles and, and other things like that. Okay.
And a permit.
That's it.
That's it, all right, just wanted to know.
I do also wanna point out that the lion's share of this property is, uh, church.
Yeah.
So, there are examples.
Right, except for taxes anyway, on this, on this particular.
Well, I know that.
But I'm sure it's.
Not from the, not from the permit, though.
There's gonna be some agreement.
Right.
Between the church and this.
Not from the permit.
No, not from the permit.
Not from the permit.
It is fascinating, you know, yeah.
All good, all right.
Oh, I, it's an interesting question.
Well, I mean, you strip the land, you put the land back, then you sell the land again to do a development, and it's like.
Yeah, it's all, all part of the process.
Right?
That's how, that's how it's gonna go around.
Apparently, that's all. So, so that's good for the people to know up there.
Moving on.
I wanted to know.
All right, so next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, see you, Steve. Take care. Good seeing you.
With it, A.C.'s work.
All right, uh, discussion, BWC Whitein Reservoir LLC, CO Blue Wave Solar, application for preliminary subdivision plan, 45 Oak Street.
Chairman, I recue myself, but I'm gonna bother.
Let the record show that Mike Z has recused himself from the hearing, or from the, uh, table. You can sit there, Mike. All right, Bill, what do we have?
Uh, I'm gonna kick it over to the applicant, they give us a little presentation on what, what's going on, and.
Okay.
I can go from there.
All right, name an address, please.
Yeah, all right, good evening, can everyone hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
See your camera.
All right, this is, uh, Jeff Murphy here with Bill Thomas, um, just wanted to give the board a little, uh, bit of clarification on the kind of reasoning why the preliminary plan submitted to 45 Oak Street, we had gotten through the approval of the solar project, um, you know, previously, and based on the timing, the way things worked out in terms of the advertisements about the, um, change to the zoning bylaw with respect to solar, where it categorized the projects into residential and commercial scale projects. Um, as part of that initial advertisement, you know, it said that commercially scaled projects were being, uh, subject to a special permit, so being as we were almost at the point where we were getting an approval for the solar project at Oak Street, um, because that was advertised just before we got that approval, um, it would have opened us up to that special permit process, so we submitted a preliminary subdivision plan to do a zoning plan freeze, so that we would not have to be subject to that portion of it. Now, we were able to work with, uh, Bill as well as town council to add in a clarification to that, um, language of that, that solar bylaw, which did pass at town meeting on September 12th, that exempted our project for, uh, projects that were filed before.
Right.
Um, I think it was September 20th, 2020, uh, as being not subject to that special permit requirement. So again, this, um.
Which the A.G. would have said anyways.
Is, is basically purely for an administrative, you know, zoning freeze, so that it preserves our approval, um, from those new amendments to the bylaw, and, um, I believe the Attorney General's office has, uh, 20 days, um, within which from town meeting to provide, um, an approval of that, um, that bylaw.
Is this moot?
So, we're basically just.
Yeah.
Um, continuing this process, um, until that, that time.
Do they want a clarification or something?
So, so just for the record, Jeffrey, um, it's my understanding through the town clerk and conversations with the town clerk, that often, um, you know, the A.G.'s office does go beyond that 90-day period, um, so I wouldn't be surprised if that's the case here, too, particularly with the COVID activity and.
Right.
House staffs are getting shorter and, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if it gets extended. Um, now that being said, um, you know, I mean, my personal opinion is I don't know that you enjoy any protection, and I do know that the board fully supports the position that your project is not, uh, does not fall under the jurisdiction of the special permit requirement, um, assuming Attorney General approves it.
Mm-hmm.
Which I expect. Um, and, and so, you know.
Yeah.
You know, have at it, I guess.
So, so, yeah, I, I.
Why are we here?
I'd say through the chair. Um, Jeffrey, yeah, to, to Bill's point, you know, I mean, just add on, your application for your solar project came in well before we zone, we approved that bylaw, so you're already, your project was already underway from that review standpoint. So, this, this is actually where the A.G. would, would say, if we were trying to penalize you in any way, that we would be in the wrong.
Right.
And they've done that with other towns.
Do they need an affirmation, right here, right now?
No.
It's gotta go through the course. You know, they have an interpretation on what they need to do, and, and try to preserve the protections that they have, uh, so that's the avenue they're pursuing. I don't think they'll need to fall back on this, but I respect the fact that they, they've done this, and, yeah, it's just a matter of time. When we get that A.G. letter, I think everybody will take a sigh of relief.
Yeah.
Hopefully they'll withdraw the application, and then we'll just move on.
Oh, okay. So, so do we continue this?
Yeah.
That's just good.
Yeah.
Do you want us to continue, Jeffrey?
Yeah, I mean, if that's an option, I mean, there's no, we're not under any sort of a, a time constraint here, I mean, again, we're, we're just kind of limbo period where until that, that bylaw is, is approved, as written, and then, then we would, you know, until then, we'll, we'll keep it, uh, keep it submitted.
Mm-hmm.
So, good.
So, so.
The A.G. has all the information, we just haven't, we just haven't had a response yet?
Waiting for them to get us a letter. Um, so if, if we need an extension to the decision timeline, Jeffrey, would you be willing to give us that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll check, I'll check on that and let you know.
Um, well, Stephen's, just through the chair. Jeffrey, why are you submitting a sub, a preliminary subdivision plan, um, thinking that the bylaw change?
Would affect.
Would affect the subdivision regs?
Yeah, so in, in talking with, uh, the applicant's counsel, so it, it, I think it has to do with the fact that the zoning bylaw change was, was advertised, like, weeks, a couple of weeks before we actually got the project approved, because the public hearing was still open and the vote hadn't been taken yet to approve the project, so that happened just before we, the night we got it approved, so that, I think it's the reasoning why we're, we're open to, you know, that.
Was it?
So again, it was just a safeguard measure, um, nothing more.
That's true, the statute in 48 falls back to the date of first advertising, not the date of town meeting where it gets voted on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we'll continue on this course, we'll wait for the A.G. to get us a decision, and then we can probably close this right up.
Right.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Okay.
All right, what's, is there a turnaround time, Bill, on this?
There's a timeline, and that's why I asked him if he'd be willing to give us an extension if we need one, and.
Yeah, okay.
He said he would.
But what's, what's usually, what's usually?
I think it's like 90 days or 135 days.
If the A.G. has, has to.
Oh, no, they have, uh.
How long do they?
90 days, right, Jeffrey, 90, 30, 60, somewhere?
The A.G.?
Okay, so they should be, they should be.
Are you talking about the, the A.G., or are you talking?
The A.G.
The A.G.
The A.G.
I believe the A.G.'s office has 90 days to review the bylaw.
So, I believe that the subdivision timeline, the preliminary subdivision is 135 days, so it's pretty close, one way or the other.
All right, so it should be hearing soon.
If the A.G. goes past their time limit, then I'll need an extension.
Yeah, okay, but we should be hearing sooner than later, probably.
All right.
All right, we good with that, Jeff?
Yeah, yeah, we have no issues with that.
Okay.
Do we wanna continue them to the?
Some of the bidders.
Well, I mean, this is, it's actually just discussion, so we just wanna get them on, we're not really in a, we're not in the public hearing anymore, so we can, it's just.
It's not a public meeting, but we should schedule it, because I know there's bidders.
Definitely, oh, yeah, yeah.
So we could, what do you think, two weeks, Jeffrey, or November? What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, that's fine with us.
November 19th?
We're asking you, two weeks or four weeks?
Well.
How about November 19th?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, if it does come in.
The A.G.'s gonna take.
Could we just schedule it for the next meeting? If it does come in within the next two weeks, we, we can move on it then, or you wanna just go till the 19th?
Why don't we just schedule it for 7:45? They continue, they continue.
On the 19th.
All right.
On, no, October 28th.
Yeah.
Okay.
If it comes in within the next couple of days, we can do it at the next meeting, and then.
7:45?
Be off to the races.
Bill, we got something in front of us? On the 28th?
Yeah, we got a few things.
Okay.
So we'll put you on the agenda for the 28th. If something comes in and we can act on it then, we'll do it then. If not, we'll go, we'll, we'll continue it again till the 19th.
Yep.
Right.
That sound good?
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
And we don't need a motion or anything, because it's just a discussion.
October 28th at 7:45.
Okay.
October 28th at 7:45. All right, anything else?
I don't believe so.
All right, good talking with you, thank you.
Did you want to see if the bidders have any comments?
Let's see her online. But there's nothing to call.
No, there's nothing to call.
We'll wait till it opens here.
Well, Mike, do you have any?
You should, just make your question.
Yeah, no, that's fine, we meant, because it's just a public meeting, I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know what's going on, so.
So you're all set, Mike, all right.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
There we go.
Okay, we're good to go. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
I thought Shirley had it, we wanted to.
Yeah, either Shirley or Laurie.
All right, 7:30.
Couple of people up there that look like they're trying to.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, was anybody trying to get on?
Can they hear us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Laurie's shaking, no, I thought.
Okay.
Bill, was anybody, was anybody trying to log in? No?
Nope.
Okay, all right, we're moving on.
Yep.
Lisa, shake your head, yes, if you're trying to get on. Okay, yeah.
Oh, okay, Lisa, you're trying to get on? All right.
Or Laurie trying to get on, too.
No, I'm just gonna say, it looks like she's, uh, having a hard time with the meeting.
Oh, okay.
I cannot unmute you, so.
Huh, I don't know where she is.
There you go, it's open.
All right, who are we speaking to?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Shirley Mizinski, 60 Oak Street.
Okay, Shirley, thank you for coming in.
Um, thank you. Just for clarification, this hasn't been a hearing, and it hasn't been a hearing set up, or is that the next meeting?
It's not really.
So this, this is a public meeting, Shirley, the preliminary subdivision plan process does not require a public hearing, so it's a public meeting. Um, so it just simply gets posted on the agenda, and then the board hears it, they work through the plan, and then, um, as you just saw, they don't even necessarily have to continue with it, but they did announce the date and time, so that bidders could participate if they wanted to.
Okay. Just for clarification, that's all.
Yep, okay. Anything else, Shirley?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, anybody else?
Nope.
No? All right, we'll move on to our next, uh.
Mr. Chairman, I'm back.
Let the record show that Mike Z is back. All right, public hearing continued. Cooperstown Road Realty Trust, application for a definitive subdivision, residential compound Hawk Hill Farm, 772 Northwest Main Street, possible votes. All right.
So when you're back, if you have a request for continuation from the applicant, um, so, um, they're looking to get on our next agenda.
Cool.
And they did grant an extension to the end of the calendar year.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Right, cool.
How's, how's the 28th look versus the 19th?
Next meeting.
Of November.
Going for the 28th? Eight o'clock on the 28th?
Yep.
You need a motion?
Yep.
Yep, we need a motion on this.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for Cooperstown Road Realty Trust. Hold on.
Hold on. I'm sorry, hold on, what, is somebody speaking?
John Menard, 734 Northwest Main Street.
Okay.
Is this for the, the Hawk Hill is seeking, uh, further continuation?
Correct. Correct.
Yep.
Yes, that's correct.
Is there an opportunity for a public, for public comment?
Yes, there is, right now, if you'd like to.
Great, thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, uh, I've, you know, I've attended a number of meetings now with this, and, um, my opinion that, that this sort of, um, repeated continuation is, is not typical of this project, and, um, you know, my frustration level is increasing with this project, as I have a time, uh, every couple of weeks, we attend a meeting, and I find that the, that the project, uh, once again gets continued. So, uh, I just wanted to take my, take an opportunity to voice my frustrations, um, that this project has taken this long and does not need, um, progress, uh, really, uh, from week to week, or from meeting to meeting.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
We hear you.
Yeah, we, we've expressed some concern to the applicant about coming in and, and moving forward with the project. Um, if they had not been responsive at all, we probably would have made a harsher decision. Um, but they've been, we've been responding, they've been responding to us. We would like to get this project going and get it completed if we can, but, um, at this time, they, they haven't worked out the final details before they come before us, and they have asked for several continuances, so.
Mm-hmm.
As long as they're responding to us, letting us know what's going on, and that they do plan on moving forward with the project, we usually keep the public hearing open unless it becomes really a waste of our time.
Right.
So, bear with us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In the past, when we've had situations like this, where applicants have requested continuances to the next meeting, and there's been no movement.
Right.
Um, the board has continued for a period of time, instead of the next meeting, to provide some kind of incentive for them to make some progress.
Right. Right.
That's up to the board completely if you want to take that route, but if you do, I would carry that forward to the applicant, that, that perspective forward to the applicant so that, you know, assuming we continue to the next meeting in two weeks, if they don't come in and give us a good solid update, then I would suggest, you know, the board consider that.
Yeah.
Because it is agenda time.
Yeah, I agree.
We can't kill another applicant that's diligent and making progress.
It's in the queue.
Did we actually ask the applicant of whether they're looking for more time?
Yeah.
To the next meeting, in October, I mean November?
I provided the next three meeting dates to the applicant and they chose the next meeting.
Okay.
And it's probably.
All right, see how that goes.
No, it's not.
Whose project is this?
Oh, Lloyd.
Yep.
No, I mean who's, he's not online?
Yep. Yep.
Oh, they're not here?
Chapman, Schleschman.
Fleischman, I remember, yeah. I mean, that's up to the board if they want to make that type of a decision.
I would need that direction so they understand, you know, what they're working towards.
Well, yeah, I mean, they've asked, specifically asked for the 28th, right? So they've asked for it, and we put them on, they don't show up, I think then the next meeting, I concur, all right, then time to drop the hammer type deal.
Yeah. Yeah, let's see how the next meeting goes. I agree with that.
So at the next meeting, we could.
I would like to carry forward a timeframe. If someone doesn't come in and give us a good update at the next meeting, the board's planning on continuing for.
Yeah. Oh, oh, yeah, I think, I think because they've, they've continued and asked for continue, you know, I mean, it's almost like three meetings in a row, it's, at that point it's almost like refile. I'm just saying.
More than that.
Yeah, correct. So I think if they're not coming to the next meeting on the 28th, then we'll ask them to refile. Reopen.
File?
Reopen.
Can we cancel them and?
So tell them we're planning on acting on it unless they show up at the next meeting.
Yeah, well.
I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
They're not indicating they're making progress and that's the measure that we're allowed to withdraw. That we're obligated to measure progress to grant the continuation. So if no progress is being made and I haven't heard any technical response to my letter from months ago, then, then the board can make a decision.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
All right, let's give them this one time and then.
Well, give them till the 28th and then have them withdraw.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, we would ask them to withdraw first before we close the public hearing, right?
Or you request if they've made progress.
They could make progress, you know, that's good faith and we'll move forward.
Yeah, correct. But to Bill's point, you know, I mean, it is chewing up a slot in our agenda and.
No, I agree.
So, I agree.
Ten minutes at a time every time. Great, just to talk about it.
Okay. I mean, they are responding with asking for a continuance, but it's, you know.
But to your point, they're, they're on their fifth.
All right, so you want to, you want to go?
Eight o'clock on the 28th.
Yep.
Eight o'clock on the 28th?
Yeah.
And?
So I had signed a motion.
Yep.
John, you got that?
Go ahead.
So I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for Cooperstown Road Realty Trust to October 28th at 8:00 P.M.
Second.
Motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Aaron?
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion?
Uh, one thing, and to be passed on what was spoken about to the applicant about the next meeting.
Correct. All right, Les Stevens eye.
Can I, hello, this is Larry, I'm at, I'm at 730 Northwest Main Street, I just want to echo John Menard's frustration and concern as well. I, I share the same frustration that it keeps getting continued, so I appreciate you guys putting forward, I just want to echo his comments as well.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Les Stevens eye.
Okay.
Mike?
Mike G. I.
Mike Rucko I.
Sooker I.
Aaron Sooker I.
Jake Schulzberg I.
Very much.
Cool.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you board.
Yep, thank you.
Good job.
Have a good night.
Cool.
All right. All right. Moving on. All right. Okay. That finishes our agenda items as scheduled for time. Bill, we got additional business, four items?
We do. What I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, is if Jeff Murphy is still on, that we take number two.
Okay.
I'm sorry, not number two, number three.
Number three. Yep, okay, sign, all right, sign Douglas Renewables LLC, 45 Oak Street. All right. Is Jeff still on?
So I had an opportunity to draft the decision, it's in your packet, the draft.
Yep.
I did provide a copy to the applicant.
Yep.
And I'll let Jeff take it from there.
Are there any cues on this one?
Yes.
Are there cues? Again.
Sure.
You look everywhere.
We had an opportunity to take a look at this draft version of the permit and provided some kind of comments and feedback after referring with the applicant on some of those, some of those items. I think there was some clarification that needed to be made. To the, the language of some of them, like condition number 46.
46.
The way it currently reads is that it's not like the access, the entire access road is to be paved, which is not.
Yep.
I wanted it to be clarified to say that the access, that it physically has a big apron that was discussed with the board, it's only marked as being paved.
Can we reference the plan?
So, so the reason, the reason I wrote it that way, it's more conservative of the two spots in the meeting minutes that it showed where this was discussed. One said the access road shall be paved and the other said the apron shall be paved, so it was a contradiction, so I carried this and, you know, it's up to the board.
Well, should it be as per plan?
No, it doesn't show.
No. No, so.
So that apron isn't show, doesn't.
The plans are very clearly labeled that the entire access road is a gravel drive A P B Y, the only portion of it which is a big apron at Oak Street, which is on the layout and material plan.
But it shows on that plan that that apron is paved and the dimensions.
It shows very clearly the distinction that the apron is paved and the remaining portion is gravel.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I, I think it just needs to say apron. I prefer to say that versus, you know, as of plan, you know, I mean, because plans get shuffled from what the decision is.
That's fine.
But I, I think, yeah, we can, Bill, I think it's minor to add that.
What's the specific length of the apron? Did we make a determination?
Jeffrey, what's the length of the apron that's proposed?
Forty.
Twenty feet?
Let me pull up the plans here, excuse me.
Maybe it's.
I want to say twenty feet off the.
Twenty, twenty feet?
My opinion.
Forty? No, it was forty two.
Okay.
Forty?
Okay.
Was it forty? Do you remember or?
What's the width?
No, it's forty wide.
Yep.
I want to be forty wide.
So yeah, but it extends into the site. Yeah, I'd say maybe like, I think it was maybe like forty feet or something like that.
Yeah.
Obviously it's a little bit wider for the turning radius.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right.
But it's depicted graphically outside of the dimensions of the apron.
Good.
Yeah. All right. All right, we'll go with, we'll go with just the apron then, okay?
Yep.
And it doesn't need to say road, just say apron?
I'll check the plan and if we're talking about forty feet, I'll just confirm that and then if it's as shown on the plan, I'll put that, otherwise I'll put forty feet.
Good.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it'll be the access road apron.
Apron. Yep.
Shall be paid.
C dash four oh one is the sheet that shows the apron, so if we can refer to it as shown on the plan, this is clear.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, the next item that we had. So the next item was number fifty one. So condition fifty one read that the proposed utility poles is being limited to one pole, any additional equipment will occur on a ground mounted pad, so that was actually never agreed to by the applicant. In one of the meetings, we did discuss the poles and the distance of the poles from Oak Street, but the applicant never said we will put everything on equipment pads because they have to coordinate with National Grid in terms of the interconnection and they have to get that. So they put, say, this is the way we're gonna, we're gonna do it. So it's my understanding that they're still proposing the utility pole configuration that we have shown on the plan.
So part of this comment being included is because I know we had a discussion, it wasn't really well reflected in the minutes. And my, my final outcome was that there was some limitation on what was going to be constructed. They had indicated that it'd be a single row, row of poles or something along those lines.
Trying to limit that.
You know, I want to be consistent with what was discussed and it wasn't reflected in the minutes.
So I, I know that, to, you know, I mean, Les Stevens, to the chair, I, I know that they usually have to have like four poles in a row because of the staging of the power and what they're offloading there, so they can't go to a pad, from a pole to a pad. I haven't seen that in any solar site and I've been to quite a few of them. So I, I think maybe what, what maybe the misinterpretation was, was that maybe we're like one single row of poles, that they're not going to be dispersed all over. Because they usually put them, they're almost like, I don't know, Jeffrey, they're, they're about, usually about four or five feet apart, right? When the, there's usually four poles together?
They're a little farther apart, there, there's usually a broad zone, maybe about thirty feet apart or so, but there are usually about five or six of these poles kind of in that kind of tight grouping, then closer to the, the road where the interconnect is occurring and then once you get beyond that last pole, then they kind of space them out a bit more. So we're proposing overhead wires to run to the equipment pads on this particular project, so.
So again, I mean, the discussion we had, I had raised Bangla's Farm as a reference where they had like a cluster.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On a scenic road.
I had pointed to Bosma's Farm where they have a cluster. So I think the board was receptive and agreeable that they don't want a cluster. My recollection is the applicant said, we can do it in a single row of poles. Is that correct, Jeffrey?
Yeah, I think a row of poles, meaning that you got a group in that, you know, thirty, thirty to forty foot spacing that you typically see for an interconnect, or only the solar farm.
Yeah.
Well, that's a lot better looking from the street.
Well, yeah.
Not have cluster.
Correct. Well, they're going to be in a line, they're going to be in a row, so one single row.
I don't think that's objectionable, I think when you have four poles within ten feet, is kind of what I'm getting at.
You just want to talk, don't you?
I didn't remember the meeting.
I do too, yeah, that's right, yeah.
So.
Yeah, I'm.
How would you like it to be? Condition worded.
As a, as a neighbor, as in a park, can I say anything?
No.
How we heard it? Yeah, I mean, you can make a comment.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, you know, I mean, the way they, they've been doing them, installing them, that they've been in, in a single row, they are spacing them out to what Jeffrey's saying, they are spacing them out more so they're not on top of each other.
We could do something that the board has to approve locations, is that something you'd be willing to do, Jeffrey?
I think so, I mean, I think they could, you know, we certainly could provide a plan showing the, the kind of final approval of the interconnection or the utility.
That's fair.
If that's, then, then I think that can easy out for us without constraining them and then you have a second crack at it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's fair.
I mean, I know the one pole is wrong, there's going to be more than one.
Correct.
I just don't know exactly how much say we have as to what National Grid does, so.
Well, that's the thing.
Plan to be provided and approved by the board.
Yeah.
Is that good, Jeff? Is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's, that seems reasonable.
We want to say interconnect plan.
Mike, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I have something to say, I remember the discussion on this. The whole idea was the board didn't want all the poles down there in the ball field, so they're going to have the poles like a regular street poles going up the hill and putting all the poles up on top of the hill where the power supply is. That way there, there would be no poles all down with a little baseball field and everything else is by the entrance of the road.
Right.
And they said they had no problem with putting it all up top because it doesn't matter where the poles are, they just run single poles going up the road to the solar farm. They do whatever they want or have to do up there, there's no difference. That's what was discussed that night of the meeting. Remember that.
Yeah, so we still can review the interconnect and if they got a, if they got a cluster of the poles, they can probably move it up to the top of the hill area.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's no difference in going on the street, the wire, they're just on one pole going up and then they put them all up on top, that feels wide open on the bottom.
Yeah.
Because it was brought up how Bosma's and everybody, you see, you see it all every time you drive by it and they were going to try to hide it all on Oak Street.
Yeah.
That's reasonable.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Continue, Jeff?
Sure. So the next item on the list was, so just wanted to kind of talk with the board on, it was conditions number forty nine and fifty, which I understand if those are, those are in there to basically, you know, make sure that the, you know, I know drainage is a big concern and point of discussion throughout the hearing process and things, but, you know, we just, I guess, wanted to clarify that, you know, particularly with condition fifty where it says, you know, the highway superintendent must approve the driveway access connecting to Oak Street at that time, he may require the installation of culvert pipes to ensure proper drainage along Oak Street. I just want to make sure that this is something that the applicant is having, you know, their counselor do as well. I think they kind of don't want to end up in a situation where they're on the hook kind of fixing some sort of pre-existing drainage issue at the site. I mean, obviously we'll have to evaluate the conditions when the entrance is built and kind of build from there, but again, I think.
You're on site.
No, not necessarily saying we're just going to go ahead and fix an existing issue.
So, so we're blending two conditions here. The one with regard to the highway superintendent and the culvert crossings is our standard condition for the scenic road, okay? So we have that in all our scenic road permits, Jeffrey, with the culvert. So if you have a driveway opening on a scenic road, the planning board historically has just deferred to the highway superintendent whether or not a culvert pipe is warranted because he knows the need better than anybody else really. So that's number one. Number two, with regard to improving drainage that may have escaped the diligent modeling that the engineer has done, it is just modeling. So, you know, we have found projects at times that don't respond the way they were intended to respond. This is not, this condition is not intended to be punitive and have them take on the town's burden of improving drainage problems. It's intended to mitigate problems that resulted and were not anticipated during the design. So I, I think both those conditions are still reasonable. I think we've carried similar conditions in the past on various projects.
Yeah. So through the chair, Les Stevens. Jeffrey, number fifty is, if you look, you know, you've been up on Oak Street, is there is a drainage area, I think on roughly both sides of the road where there's a ditch. And so I think when you get into this project, John may, the highway superintendent might want, you know, an existing pipe or if there's a pipe there, put across that would make it easier for the trucks entering the site, so you're not going into a mud, you know, area and marsh, that'd probably be a better situation if, if, you know, if he determines that's needed, it'd just help you with the site access. You know, that way you're not running mud down the road if it's too, if it's too.
Or creating a drainage issue.
You're correct. Yep, that's all.
Backing up water.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's nothing more than that.
Cross drain right before this project on Oak Street, you get to Suzie's house and there's another cross drain after the project by the big feet. So the water's been going there since forever, so just maintain it, keep it going that way.
Again, I don't expect, but those are kind of like catchalls, Jeff.
Yeah.
If, if we have a problem that was not anticipated, it gives us the ability to say, hey, fix this problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Yeah, so I don't think it's that, that critical of the thing.
Have you met with the highway superintendent yet on, on the driveway permit?
Uh, no.
No, okay. Now, let's see what he has to say and then we can go from there. Yep, Mike?
As in about, I think it was brought up during all this where they're paving that apron.
Yeah.
The biggest thing was having that as a reverse, not sloping to Oak Street, you guys are going to keep it reversed a little bit to prevent any water from getting on Oak Street.
Right.
Add water. So I mean, if that's done, you won't have to worry about any of this.
Right, you won't have to worry about any of it, yeah.
If you try to slope that driveway where it's pitching on to Oak Street, you're going to have issues.
The design of the, the design of the apron going in.
Well, the design of the apron was supposed to be a reverse.
Yeah.
Just remember.
Do you want me to confirm that on the plan that it's pitched away from the road?
Well, that's the issue is that it can't physically be pitched away from the road because that side of Oak Street is higher than that gutter line of Oak Street, so in order to get into the site, we have to ramp up a bit to get into the site.
You ramp up, you're never going to get low boy.
Well, like Bill said, it's kind of like a standing.
I mean, yeah, I don't think Jeff's objected into these forty nine and fifty anymore.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily think it's physically possible, I tend to agree with Jeffrey about the pitching down and that up.
Yeah.
No, no, I didn't mean that way. Down, normally like your driveway.
Yeah.
You have it cutting in at even one inch, so the water can't come out, you're going to be paving it.
I absolutely get it, yeah.
I mean, it's amazing when it does it can do it.
He's basically catching as much one up as it can. He's basically catching as much one up as it can. There's gotta be some portion that comes down through the road and the design parameter is that amount coming down is going to be less than what used to come down. So the condition I tried putting in is if for some reason it's more, we hit, I say, hey, Jeffrey?
Excellent.
Fix it, yeah.
What about crowning too? I mean, that can help.
Barry. Okay, Jeff, anything else?
I mean, those are all the ones that...
Those are the ones?
Really, we have on our list kind of for discussion purposes. Again, I know that this afternoon, the applicant wanted to have their, you know, team review the items a little more closely and make sure they were comfortable with all the language. But again, now that we've had a chance to talk through some of these things, I can kind of give them an update on that and just make sure that they're in agreement, like for example, the one about the way the pole configuration is gonna be. If you could give us specifically how you want that worded so that they can confirm it because I don't wanna commit them to something that may not work in terms of their utility interconnection.
Yeah, I'll get you the draft language we talked about tonight, tomorrow. And then even though I have that printed out for signing tonight, we can wait till the next meeting, Jeffrey. Is that okay?
Yes, that's okay. I'd rather have to get a chance to fully review everything.
Yeah, okay.
I want to thank you for your patience on that, too.
So I just got one question, Bill, through the chair. Number forty-eight, is that just the, that's just during construction, right? You have the orange construction fencing?
Yeah.
Temporary during construction is gonna be?
Yeah.
Shall be installed? Shall be installed. It doesn't say anything like...
I think it is during construction. I mean, we can add during construction. It was in the minutes and that's...
Yeah. Yeah.
It says, "Orange construction fence shall be installed behind the erosion control barriers."
Yeah.
"When the limit of work approaches within twenty-five feet of adjacent property."
I just don't want anybody to think that they're gonna look at an orange fence.
No, it's to set a physical boundary to the contractor on site.
Yeah.
So that they know not to go past that point. That's really what it's for.
Anything else, Les?
No, that's it. That's it. I think the rest of this is good.
Anybody else have anything?
Nope.
Okay.
Alright, so...
So, no action?
Yep.
We discussed it. I'll file it, get him the revision.
Yep.
He'll let me know if they're good with it and hopefully sign it at the next meeting.
Okay.
And in the meantime, I'll also get the shade tree done for them, too.
Okay. And hopefully the AG will respond. Alright, Jeff, anything else?
I don't think so. I mean, I can answer this type of question. So like, in terms of the preliminary plan, I know it's kind of more of an informal discussion with the board.
Yeah.
But, so at the next meeting, again, like, we would, I guess theoretically, actually discuss it for real or could we? Because again, like, I think, Bill, you mentioned like a certain timeline that you have, you're supposed to have on the preliminary plan.
And frankly, it doesn't matter what action the board takes, really the preliminary. It's a tool. A preliminary plan is filed prior to a definitive plan and it has two functions. It opens dialogue between the board and the applicant and what they like to see on the plan. And the second function is there's a shorter time, review timeline that they are granted for the definitive process if they file a preliminary.
Right.
Even if the preliminary is denied.
Right, right.
They still get that credit on it.
Exactly.
So it really doesn't matter. And to be honest with you, Jeffrey, historically, we've never even written up a decision on any preliminary plan that's been filed. You still get the credit on the timeline, you get the feedback from the board, but there's no filing. We point to the minutes.
Okay. Alright, thanks for the clarification.
And I think it's just gonna be a concept plan anyways. It's not a full-blown, not a full-blown calculations and everything.
Alright, we all set?
Yep.
Alright, Jeff. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll do that, Bill?
We'll just hang on to the signed file, you know?
So why don't we take number two?
Mr. Chairman, I'm back.
Alright, number two.
You sure?
Yeah. Alright, White and Reservoir. Update, last releases, possible votes.
So, you know, I'm kind of keeping this on the agenda, hoping that, you know, we're continuing progress. I do know the applicant heard back from the state DHCD got approval, I believe, on the affordable housing unit, which is good. I met with their new contractor on site. They've installed some of the granite curb on site. I got an email today from the contractor that they're going to be cutting out some of the four pavement sections in the binder, repair that. We're still ironing out some of the bugs in the surety. We've come to an agreement on the value. Now we're working on the agreement for the surety.
Conservation land?
The conservation land is now, I believe, before the Board of Selectmen. They have to act on it. I think they're working with town council, the applicant's council. And I think there's no town meeting vote required because it would be conservation. Once the selectmen approve it?
Yeah.
It goes to the CONCOM, I believe, for their acceptance and signature. Is that correct, Bob? I muted you, hold on. You always have the noisiest room, Bob. Hold on, you're still, can't hear you still, hold on. I don't know, can you click your mic icon?
Yeah. Okay, is that that?
Yeah, there you go. There you go, we got you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, that's how I understand it. And just FYI, Bill's been very helpful to bridge that confusion in who was going to accept and sign for the land. I want to thank you for that. The surety, like Bill said, we would read on a number. I think I messed up. I told Jen, I, okay, Bill, I misunderstood. I thought I just needed to bring a check down and, you know, I don't know what I thought. Okay, but, you know, she commented, I don't know if you were on the email, she said she'll do the paperwork on that tomorrow. You know, as everybody's aware, I'm sure. Finari is off the job, Lina was on the job. I think we went over that the last time. You know, our team, okay, is actually headed up by Jude, who was there tonight as well. And you still want my under bill, okay, with the DHCD, you know, for your approval. That came in around five o'clock tonight. We haven't got the physical paperwork yet, but Reno, Old Hagan sent an email that I forwarded to Bill and basically verified that. You know, we're, I guess what I'd like to do is request that you vote on releasing, there were some lots and there's some paperwork floating around from the last meeting. We, okay, of course, conditionally on getting, okay, a check for the, okay, the bond and a gen gal that's doing the paperwork. So the appliance and building permits, we've got some houses there sold, I shouldn't say sold, under agreement that we'd like to start, okay, before the winter. We are moving ahead. We think we're gonna have the permit next week. And the working relationship has been, it's miles and miles better than it was. I think you'd agree with that, Bill.
I absolutely agree with that.
I do, too.
So just to finish up, I do have a signed release from the no building covenant that I've been instructed to hold on to until we get those things. The conservation land gets transferred, the surety amount gets updated, and what was the last one? The DHCD approval comes through. So it looks like you get the check mark on the DHCD. Looks like tomorrow we'll get the surety in place. And then it's just a matter of getting that CONCOM land transferred and, you know, I'll let the building department know as soon as possible to get going on that.
So is it, is it, if they're to say, Bill, and again, I'm asking, I'm not questioning, that we, like the need to live the deed, we're just waiting for somebody to accept it?
Right. In the way the condition is worded is that the land shall be transferred to the conservation commission prior to the release of... Initially, it was all lots, but then there was an amendment to the decision that said two lots may be released. And that's what we did. And there's no provision for additional releases. So, you know, it's certainly up to the board if they instruct me to do, otherwise I'll do it. But I wouldn't advise it. It's contrary to the decision.
You can't.
Bob's been working in good faith and I can't say enough about how the project's been coming around.
I agree.
Working with Jude is a pleasure.
Yeah.
So that's not the issue at all.
It seems like it's right around the corner.
It sounds like it's pending. It's, you know, there's one check mark left that needs to get done.
How much time between the selectmen and CONCOM? I mean, they're gonna, like, in the next week?
I don't know.
You guys better handle it.
How quick is this coming?
They're trying to give us, we've been trying to give this away, sir. I can't see you, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's over there.
The, we've been trying to give this land away for months. Okay, first we're trying to give to CONCOM. They, they basically, okay, we finally figured out, again, we would have still been batting this ball back, back and forth.
The process.
Bill's directed it, it's the selectmen. I don't know what it takes for them to, Jay Talman has okayed the deed, it's for acceptance. So to my mind, I can't make them accept something.
So through, I through the chair, Les Stevens. I believe you can, he can submit his building applications and it still would just be held up by Mark. So his building...
I can have a conversation with Mark if the board directs me to do so and get going on the review, but just don't issue the permit until...
Correct.
That way, when these three things get done.
That's right. Because it's pending.
Yeah, it's pending.
It's all pending.
I have no problem doing that.
Yeah, I think that...
Does that make sense, Bob?
Well, that helps.
Yeah.
No question. You know, they haven't accepted it next week, okay? We could report it at the next meeting. I'd like to stay on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, they haven't accepted that in two weeks. I'm gonna ask in advance, okay? I mean, I've done everything I can do.
I'm happy to help from my end. Bob, just ask me and, you know, I'll see what I can do.
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem getting it all in, getting it all reviewed, ready to go where it's a matter of, yep, go.
Yeah.
That way there, you don't have to wait, next week or whatever, to have it all looked at. But to actually release it, I think we need to hold the what?
We have to assume the condition, the way it's worded.
Yeah, I'm okay with letting the applicant do it that way.
Sound good? That sound good, Bob?
That's about as good as we're gonna get.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you could submit your building applications, Bill can tell Mark to hold it up.
That way you'll be all ready to go when...
Yeah. That will save you at least a couple of weeks of review time for the building permits.
Right.
So...
Yeah, no problem with that.
From Andrews?
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
It's Jude from Andrews.
Jude Gavine.
Okay.
You got it. Who is accepting the land?
Conservation commission.
So do they have to all vote on that at a meeting to accept it or is it something that...
No, I think they've already voted to accept the language, but they passed the documentation to the selectmen, which is required.
Yeah.
And the selectmen have a little checklist that they go through to look at things. Sometimes they might want a 21E, for example. Other times they might not. Sometimes they want a survey plan. Other times, in this case, we have that, so that check mark is done. So I think procedurally, they've got a little checklist that they're going through. But Bob, if you're getting held up on whatever end, I'm happy to carry something forward to their office and inquire on the status and see what the holdup is and, you know, figure out what we can do to move it forward.
Yeah, I'm under the impression that, you know, they were waiting for Jay Talman. He's opined on that. That's the impression I'm under, okay? And they're just waiting to accept the deed, I think, and record it.
Okay.
Okay, now I may be wrong, but that's my understanding.
Okay.
Well, then, I guess that's what I was asking because, yeah, if it could just be accepted.
Yeah, I mean, is that, do you remember?
It's all been voted on already, so it's just better...
Do you have something, Bob, that we could provide for them easily? That's all, I'm just trying to get as much in.
I understand.
Can that be inquired into? Yeah, that's what I'm doing. I'll look into it, I'll pick where it's at and then I'll see if I can...
Okay.
Remove any blockages.
That sounds good.
Yeah, and then in parall...
I like that, Jude.
And I think in parallel, I mean, Bob can move forward with submitting the applicant, you know, building applications. Well, how many lots was there? Three or five?
Five.
Five lots?
Five lots, right, Bob?
Yes.
Alright, so, okay, no.
For this.
That sound good?
Yes, sir.
Boyd, that sound okay?
Yep.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else, Bob?
Yeah.
Nothing else? No? Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yep. Bill, what's the current surety amount?
Uh, I wish it's... Jude, do you remember the number for the surety?
Um, it was roughly twenty thousand.
It went up twenty-two thousand for the pavement issue.
Well, was it currently?
It was one thirty-five each.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, Jude?
Yeah. Surety, I based it on the deed that it was done previously and I think, Bill, you looked up the today's current rates and just added that on.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, that's fine. So, yeah, it's twenty-two thousand.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Jude. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Bill, what else?
Uh, number one?
CMRPC.
Planning board delegate.
Planning board delegate. Is it an ad or a verb?
Who's looking down?
Mike should do it.
No.
Mike, no, that Mike. Mike, you're retired, you should do it. It'd be good.
What happened to number one?
That is it, we're talking about it.
That's what we're talking about right now.
You're our number one guy.
You are our number one guy.
You'll be Jake.
So what do you want out of me?
We are delegate.
I was at this past year and it's really difficult. I mean, I'm on call a lot, I work a lot of evening hours. I think I've gotten one email from them since I've done it and I couldn't attend because I was on call.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I've done it before. It's mainly just their emails and some stuff filtering along. They just, they just sent out a thing about the...
I just saw it, too.
The housing.
Yeah, the housing study?
No, no, this was the state. State doesn't want any restrictions regarding 40B housing and stuff like that for local permitting that, so that they want to...
Can you forward a copy, Mike?
Yeah.
Sounds like you're involved pretty much.
I know all of the people up there.
It sounds like you'd be a good fit.
Sounds like you'd be a great delegate.
I'll take it on for, you know, a year until someone's ready to take it on next.
Very noble.
I'll second that.
You want to make a motion, too?
Yeah, we want a motion.
We're good. You got the minutes?
Want to make a motion?
I do.
There you go.
I make a motion for Les Stevens to be the CMRPC representative for the Town Douglas planning board. And Mike is gonna second it.
They only second it?
Second.
Alright, motion made by Jake, seconded by Mike?
Yeah, all good.
Alright, roll call vote?
Les Stevens' eye.
Okay.
That's it.
Alright, roll call.
Mike Raco eye.
Mike Soker eye.
Aaron Sokrath eye. Jake Schultzberg eye.
Ernie Mac's eye. Alright.
Thank you, Les.
Good job, Les.
One for the team.
Yeah, yeah, he's taking one for the team.
For the keeper.
Just the meeting minutes, Ernie.
Yep, okay. Alright, let's do the meeting minutes. We didn't get executive session meeting minutes yet from here.
No, I wanted to talk to Jay before.
Yep, okay, no, that's fine, I just want to make sure. All right, which one would you?
Do the 10th, September 10th, first, obviously.
Let's do September 10th?
Yes, but I have a question perhaps for you. The format of this is entirely different, like, I guess it's a new person doing it now, that's fine. But, I'm kind of curious, if you look down the sheet, there's these numbers in parentheses, like 130, 305. I mean, is that a timeline, is that minutes from the start of a meeting?
So, so when you watch the video, the selectmen do this, so she does the minutes for the selectmen. And if you look at the timeline there, and then go to the YouTube video, that's where that occurs.
Good to know.
Cool.
We also email the cable department, so if you, if you click on the show more description tab on the YouTube video, there will be the list of topics, and those numbers also show up there. And all you have to do is click on that particular number, it's blue, so-
Takes you there.
It takes you there.
Better than waiting for the whole meeting to run, you can-
So, if you wanted to watch all the videos, for example, for Starred, you would search on YouTube, AA-200224, and just those videos will come up. Which is helpful.
Okay, yeah, that's great. Okay.
So, it's your preference, if you want to keep those time codes in the minutes, you may. If you don't, we can have them taken out, that's up to you.
I, I think the only thing I would want her to do is put the, um, on the 23rd one, if she could just send her planning board, put it in the bold.
Format, yeah.
Format, just so it's similar to the old format?
Yeah.
With the header, that's all.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And, and it wasn't-
I don't have any trouble with the times, I mean, I just was uncertain that they were.
I think my only other question is, is, um, when these are posted, are these posted by, you know, what's written in the upper corner is September, written out September, the whole month, and then, you know, the, uh, the day and the year, she's abbreviated it, so I'm not sure if that affects the way you guys record it? Or the files recorded for posting?
No, really, the hard copy that's signed by the meeting minute person is the copy that moves.
Okay, yeah.
So, um, so the formatting, all of this, really subjective, your preference. It's stylistic more than content.
Yeah, just, just if it matches with what the, the past file name was, it's gonna make sense.
Consistent, I always look consistent.
That's all, yeah, that's all.
The rest of this looks good.
So, so, the hours thing is like, if it's 2:49:06, we, it was roughly 9:49, and we closed that meeting.
Depends if we start or if it's seven.
Yeah, rough and tough.
Yeah, roughly.
It's pretty cool.
Sometimes not in order, because we jumped down a line when we covered a topic.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's different within the topic.
That's Ernie hopping around.
He also calls out the boat, so if you wanted to just jump to the boat, you could do that too.
Right, okay. Mike, do you find anything in this, or?
No, other than my confusion over the times.
That's good, good.
They're fine.
It's good.
I mean-
What does she mean by the, on the segments here, it goes DEF dash, the 17, 0, 2, 2, 2, then the next one is MOD?
Where, where are you looking at, Mike?
Page three, uh, which date? 9:23, is it? See, on the left-hand column, and what's that?
Yeah, number two.
The difference is in the DEF and the MOD.
That's our, that's our internal file numbering system, it's on all your agendas. Again, it helps us locate things.
Okay.
It's, it's basically the date that the application came in on. DEF is a definitive subdivision.
Oh, cool.
MOD is a modification of an approved subdivision. And then it's the year, month, day. Um, so, it, it's a helpful tool, and it's chronological. So, it, it also helps if you wanted to do either minutes, meeting minute search on our bulletin board, or if you wanted to do it on YouTube, you just punch in that number and then boom, all those videos.
Okay.
Oh, so SPR is 2020, April 28th.
Correct.
So, some of these are old, 17, 2017, Gilboa?
Yeah.
And 2012, Witten Reservoir?
Yeah.
The only thing I'm seeing maybe, I, where she's listing, um, say, like, on the 23rd, others present. There's a lot of people listing present, I don't know if all those people need to be listed as present or not.
I know the Conservation Commission has that, this is the first time I've seen this on the planning board side, so, again, if you guys want to adjust the format, say it now, so she gets it. I don't necessarily think we need others present.
I don't either.
The way, the way Mary used to do it was, you'd have the board, then if town council was present, or someone, myself.
Right, yeah.
That's, that's who would be listed there, not like, um-
Because Evan Turner, he was just online to do a quick presentation.
Yeah.
He wasn't really present in, on the board.
Right, and then Evan Turner's name will show up in the body of the minutes, so-
Yeah, I don't think she has to list everybody that's at the meeting.
I believe that's kind of the way we used to do it, where, you know, if county council's here, that's one thing. So, it's, and I was gonna with you.
Right.
Right, yeah. Just selectmen, you know, something, you know, water selectmen. But as far as everybody else, I mean, it'll be a list a mile long when somebody's meeting. So, back to the, when, if I found, you need five pages to fill out everybody's name. So, it's one of those deals.
It's more work for her, but I think, I think if she just listed, like, the non-voting members that were there, that were Douglas. I mean, Douglas, you know, such as, like, Bob, Bob-
Topper representative.
Topper representative, you know, Bob Minarick and things like that.
Like, Bob Minarick would be good, because he's-
And Jay, and, and Bill. That's it.
And Bill, yeah.
That's all.
Just regular applicants and stuff like that, you don't need them on there.
So, that one looked all right, the 23rd?
Yeah, but let me have a question, like, on page three, number two?
For the 23rd?
For the 10th, excuse me. Page three, item number two, Woodland Road. Now, that mod, 03, 06, 12, is what?
It's his filing format.
That's my file number for that application.
2003?
Mod, modification.
Holy crap.
It's for a subdivision.
It was a modification.
And that's his recording date.
SPR would be special.
That's awesome, though, to see that, for us, the date of inception of the initial-
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
You want a motion?
Yes, sir.
Motion away.
Make a motion to approve the, as written, the meeting minutes for September 10th.
Second, okay.
Motion made by Mike G., seconded by Aaron.
And the other one?
We'll vote on it first.
Les Stevens' eye.
Mike Rocco eye.
Mike Swoker eye.
Aaron Sokrath eye. Jake Schulzberg eye.
Ernie Moxe eye. All right.
Then we have the one for the 23rd too.
This is the first time we've seen this, I mean, tonight, so I just haven't looked at it, I don't know if somebody else has and wants to-
We want to defer it to the next meeting, that's all.
We can defer it to the next meeting.
Yeah.
You have a chance to look at it.
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, if somebody is confident enough to make a motion, go ahead, but-
I think he's got everything in there.
You take it, somebody else?
All right.
All right.
All right.
Bill, anything else?
Yeah, you have some stuff in your YouTube sign, you might recall a few months back, months back, we had a couple of accessory apartments, and I think what the issue was, that we were unclear on whether or not they had taxes current.
Okay.
There was one of them, yeah.
One, yeah, one was resolved, and then there was still one.
Yeah.
So, I checked both of them, both of them, the taxes are current, I checked with treasurer today. Unless there's another.
I, I don't think that the form was in there.
Douglas renewables will hold.
The form isn't in there, I checked.
No, 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 no.
I did it today.
No, 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 when it, when it came in, the first time, I think the-
That's correct.
So, Douglas renewables, we're gonna hold off on?
We're gonna hold off on Douglas renewables.
Okay, special permit extension, accessory apartment for Darryl and Shannon.
Should we be talking about some more, uh, stone markers?
Monuments?
Monuments getting approved for the next?
At the, at the annual meeting, we just got-
Got some more.
Conservation Drive approved.
Yeah.
Have they started?
We want to go for-
For spring or anything?
We have not started Conservation Drive. Andrews, I spoke with Byron, actually, um-
Because he got a wood?
About, I said, hey, what's going on?
Did, oh, did he, yeah, he got a wood in it?
Down's Road.
Yeah, he's got it, okay.
He said, yeah, it's on his radar screen, he's gonna get to it. You guys gave him six months, which still, that has not passed yet.
Right, and the idea is, we were trying to combine them to do a bunch of them all at once, and maybe drop some costs down, and if we have another-
We have to put the second grouping out to bid, and we may or may not be the guy to get it.
Yeah, sure, just put it back out the bid. Do we want to?
Where do we want to go for next? Should we get a?
I would rather just, let me take a look at the list, and then I'll make a recommendation.
Do we want to put that on the agenda, so we can get that for the fall?
Where, I, I think-
On the fall meeting, the more closes on the 20th of this month, so-
So, we'll miss it, so spring.
Well, yeah.
I don't think we should get too greedy and start asking for money at both town meetings.
No, 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 I didn't, I was, I was just asking.
Initially, we said one, one a year.
Yeah.
Right, and that's why I'm saying, asking about it, now that we're there, it's done. We know what we're gonna do, just get done and over with. Because what normally happens is, oh man, town meetings, oh, we forgot about it.
Yeah.
So, let's just do it.
Correct, get in on the pipeline. Get it on the pipeline for that.
Delicate fills this out?
Um, I, I'm sure Suzanne will, or I will.
Okay. You just have to know that he's gonna be the guy. He doesn't have to sign in any place? He doesn't have to sign in any place?
No.
No, okay, you the man.
I know those guys.
Oh, you the man.
All right, do we, do we?
I'll hold off on these two.
Do we want to look at, um, one of the things that we came up, we discussed a while back, was the residential compound bylaw? I think it was the, the fact of, uh, one of the concept plans, I think, Bill, was like, 10 three-acre lots on a 12-foot wide road.
So, what I can do is put that on the agenda for the next meeting for discussion, and I'll circulate the bylaw, so everybody has a chance to look at it. We can have an initial conversation, because that's unreasonable.
Yeah, because I think that was one of the ones that you said that probably needed to be tightened up a little bit, or?
I think we're gonna get an A and R two for the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll put, I'll put it down for discussion.
Okay. Meeting for, uh, next one, it sounds like.
Well, yeah, the monuments is a good deal to get caught up with, all these old, old places that have none. And town meeting was good, and the people understood where this isn't from what we do now, this is from years ago.
So-
That's a big deal.
We also have mail.
Mail.
You've got mail.
We got mail.
These are public hearing notices from, this is from Oxbridge, this is from Oxbridge. So, they must be abudders to the location of our property.
The state law requires-
Yeah, out of town.
Communities notify abutting planning boards of public interference.
Yep.
These over?
It does, you know, I don't know why, but somehow we got away from the practice of putting-
Yeah, we used to get them, yeah, we used to get them for us.
What, do they have to notify us if it, if it's a property, a budding art town property, or just anything?
Bunning towns, they have to notify of all public hearings. So, if they get an application for substitution, okay, whatever.
Are we diligent in that practice? Do we notify?
We do it, every time we do it, yeah.
For every pro, time I have a public hearing? Have our meetings? Any public meetings now? Okay.
There's also something in here from the Department of Housing, so that's in our mail file, if anybody wants to look that over.
So, or?
Anybody signed this, both times?
Yep.